Good evening everyone, fellow councillors, honoured guests, welcome to the annual general meeting of the council. The first business of the annual meeting is to elect the mayor for the ensuing year. May I have—oh, no we haven't got—sorry, I'm sorry, I'm getting it wrong. There you go. Sorry, yeah. Last the Mayor's Chaplain please, to lead us in prayer. Thank you, I'm getting ahead of myself. The first business of the annual meeting is to elect the mayor for the ensuing year. May I have a proposition please? I am not a candidate.
Dorian. Thank you, Madam Mayor, honoured guests, elected members, ladies and gentlemen. I stand this evening to propose councillor Barry Pierpoint as the next Worshipful the Mayor of Boston. Barry was born in Nottingham many years ago, he won't tell me what year, but he did say he was very young when he was born. And after an education in the city, he graduated from Nottingham Trent University in 1974 with a degree in business. His early career then laid the groundwork for his later success in sports and business consultancy. Barry joined Leicester City Football Club in 1991 as a marketing director and was promoted to chief executive within two years. During his tenure, he played a pivotal role in transforming the club from a £2 million loss-making organisation to a £24 million turnover in just eight years. Some key achievements under his leadership included the club's flotation on the stock market, the development of the Carling Stand in 94, and the establishment of Fox Leisure, the club's in-house kit manufacturing brand. And by 1999, Barry was ready to move on to pastures new and left the club. After leaving Leicester City, Barry held executive roles at several other football clubs. In Portsmouth Football Club from 2000 to 2001, he served as chief exec. And then he moved on to Bradford City Football Club as interim chief executive, and he restructured that company overseeing the development and launch of a new £9 million stand. But one year after that, Barry acted as the chief exec for a consortium aiming to take over Boston United. And when that didn't come to fruition, he became the part-time chief exec at Grantham Town in a voluntary capacity. But in that time, he managed to transform the club's fortunes and emphasise community engagement and commercial development once again. He finished in Kings Lynn Town Football Club in 22, when he took on the role of chief executive, aiming to rebuild the club following their relegation that year, and once again managed to strengthen their community relations. Beyond football, Barry is the managing partner and founder member of BP Management and Marketing Services, which is a consultancy specialising in business turnaround and growth strategies. He was also a director and part owner of Morgan Lawrence Publishing Services Limited, and that focused on producing autobiographies of former professional book players and managers. In 2020, he authored his biography called Minding My Own Football Businesses, detailing his experiences at Leicester City, and it's a very interesting read. If you've not read it yet, do pick up a copy. I'm sure you've got some spare, Barry. Fanning over more than the last 20 years, Barry's contributions have been acknowledged through various awards. He was the DHL Boss of the Year in 98, he was the Ernst &amp; Young Turnaround Entrepreneur of the Year in 99, and he was a finalist in Leicestershire's Business Personality of the Year in 2005, all acknowledged for his business achievements. And then in 22, 2022 rather, Nottingham Trent University honoured him as an outstanding alumni fellow. And to this day, he undertakes coaching for graduate students on the Business Leaders and Management course at universities. His political life started here in Boston, when he became the elected member for Oldley Kinrangle in 2015, when he stood under the UKIP banner. But he left the party shortly after the election. And not long after, he became an independent, which is where Barry's heart has lain ever since. His political efforts reflect a commitment to pragmatic, community-focused governance, leveraging his leadership experience to address local challenges. Barry has served as a committee member on audit and governance, planning, licensing and overview and scrutiny. And since 2023, he's been a very proactive chairman of both the Boston Town Area Committee and our Audit and Governance Committee. Barry is an extremely kind and helpful councillor, and I know he's been a great asset to this year's mayor in her fundraising aspirations, organising his special evenings of quizzes, raffles and bingo. And none of us will ever look at a salami quite the same ever again. His laugh is entirely infectious, and you can very often hear him before you see him coming down the corridor. He's been a great source of knowledge and wisdom to many of us in this chamber. And I know that he will put the stamp of his own personality very clearly on the office of mayor. Madam Mayor, for the last time, Madam Mayor, it is my great honour and privilege to recommend to council that we elect councillor Barry Pierpoint as the 490th Worshipful the Mayor of Boston. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Dorian. Do we have a second please? Thank you, councillor Broughton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm delighted to second councillor Pierpoint for the Worshipful Mayor of Boston. Over the several years I've known Barry, or some councillors know him, especially councillor Marston Bother, he always has a smile on his face and time for— he always has a smile on his face and time for everyone. Nothing is too much trouble, whether you're the cleaner or the CEO, everyone is treated the same. As a person, who he treats as he would wish to be treated himself. Many a time, you can walk past a room and know Barry is in there without seeing him, with his very distinct laugh emanating from it somewhere, something he does often and always lights up a room. Barry has been very approachable and assisted in helping new councillors on all sides of this chamber find their feet. And I for one have had many a long chat with him, learning from his vast knowledge of business, corporations and governance, and how to better myself and others. As the leader has touched on, Barry has been involved with several major football teams, who after this season, I'm sure would have wished Barry was still involved with them. Barry is a mentor to undergraduates at various universities, as the leader has said, something that I and other councillors have had the pleasure of learning from for free. And I can honestly say, he always encourages and offers advice to everyone I know, regardless of ability, and makes them better and more confident in their work and themselves. Barry is a brilliant organiser and planner, and I'm sure many of you will testify from his events he organises, including our outgoing mayor, who only last week had a mayor's charity event organised by him, and the pictures show what a great fun night it was. Madam Mayor, you have been a tremendous ambassador for our town this year. And I'm sure councillor Pierpoint will take the reins for the next 12 months, becoming the 490th mayor of Boston, and will put his own stamp on this role, something I am looking forward to seeing. And I am sure will make, as have you, Madam Mayor, a tremendous mayor for the coming year and help promote Boston, its people, communities and businesses in doing so. I would like to say that being elected as a councillor has introduced me to many new people and acquaintances. And Barry is one who I am very happy to call a good friend and colleague, and I wish him every success in his mayoral year. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Broughton, and those kind words too. Does anyone else wish to speak? Are there any further propositions? Thank you, then. We will now move to the vote. All those in favour? I think we can say that's unanimous. Thank you.
I will now read and sign the Statutory Declaration of Acceptance of Office. I, Barry Pierpoint, having been elected to the office of mayor, hereby declare that I take the office upon myself or duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability. Thank you, Rob. I will now ask Mrs Pamela Love to come forward to receive the mayoress's badge of office. There's a nice presentation of flowers there for you. Well done. Right, I've got to accept this position now, so I've got a few words to say, if I can find them. Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed councillors, distinguished guests and officers. Firstly, may I thank most sincerely councillor Anne Dorian and councillor Dale Broughton for being my proposal secondary for this very honoured position. Thank you to you both, this means so much to me. Thank you. It is with great humility and pride that I stand before you today, privileged and honoured to be appointed as the 490th mayor of Boston for our wonderful town and borough. I would like to express my deepest gratitude to each and every one of you here today for entrusting me with this great responsibility. It's a privilege and a duty that I take to heart, as I'm deeply committed with passion, dedication, respect and integrity to carry out my entrusted mayoral duties for this coming year. I want to thank my predecessor councillor Helen Staples for her service, dedication and hard work during the past 12 months, whom she's been truly amazing, will be such a very odd act to follow. Thank you, Helen, thank you. Helen has laid a very strong community foundation, and I'll build upon that with the same passion, commitment and stamina. I'd like to thank also the deputy mayor councillor Susan Welbury, who's been her right-hand person for all the hard work and fundraising and the service you've done to assist the mayor in her role. Thank you, Suzanne. I'd also like to thank the lady mayoress, Jennifer Oglesby, as well, for supporting the mayor and all the work that you've done. Been a great privilege to work with you. And also to the deputy mayoress, Jay Welbury. Thank you, Jay, for what you've done as well, assisting the mayor. What a great mayoral team they've been. And I'm really proud to say that I've enjoyed working with all four of you in what you've done and what you've achieved. Thank you. I'd like to introduce you and welcome and thank my lady mayoress Pamela Love, who's taken on this huge role and responsibility. And I know as a relative that Pamela will be compassionate and committed to saving the people of Boston too. She's a people person who works tirelessly and nothing is too much trouble for her. She is visionary, dedicated and spends most of her working life helping others to improve their lives. I couldn't have selected a more dedicated, passionate and people person as Pam to be my lady mayoress. Pam, I thank you for that, thank you. Together, we will make a great Boston team. Pam and I worked extremely hard to serve the people of Boston, represent the borough, to continue to make Boston a place we can be all proud of now in the years to come. Boston is a town steeped in rich history, with a vibrant culture and a deep sense of community. From the famous St Botol's church to the bustling Market Square, our borough and town has long been a beacon of tradition and progress. But what truly sets Boston apart is its people, hardworking, resilient and full of pride. Together, we have built a robust community that is stronger, cohesive and integrated. And I'm excited, eager and keen to work alongside all of you to continue shaping a brighter future for our town and borough. As your mayor, I will focus on fostering a spirit of unity, collaboration and community partnerships. Our challenges may be many, but they are not insurmountable. By working together, we can ensure that Boston remains a place where everyone has the opportunity to thrive, where our heritage is celebrated, where our children can look forward to a prosperous future. During my mayoral year, I will strive to be a voice for the people of Boston, within the council, within our local businesses, our schools, neighbourhoods and the four corners of our borough. I will work tirelessly to support initiatives that promote economic growth, improve public services and make Boston a safer, more welcoming place for all. But my vision for Boston goes beyond just policies and programmes. It's about creating a town and borough where everyone feels heard, valued and connected. It's about making sure that every resident, no matter their background or circumstances, has a chance to... Item beyond the agenda is to elect a deputy mayor this evening and it's election of a deputy mayor, sorry, yes. I therefore formally move the councillor Patsy Marston to be appointed deputy mayor. Sorry, I've got to do a proposal first, I beg your pardon. Sorry, I'm getting a bit myself in a twist, let me have a drink first, I'm getting a bit thirsty. Is anyone in this? Let me start again. Right, I want to elect a deputy mayor. And I'm going to elect, I'd like to propose councillor Marston for the deputy mayor. It is my wish that the council should elect councillor Patricia Marston to be the deputy mayor for the ensuing year. Ladies and gentlemen, honourable councillors, distinguished guests and officers, it is with great pride, respect and passion that I wish to propose councillor Marston as my deputy mayor of our beloved town and borough of Boston. We all know the role of a deputy mayor is one of immense responsibility, requiring not only dedication, hard work and commitment, but also a deep passion for our people and communities that we serve. I met councillor Marston two years ago when she was elected to the Fenside Ward where she lives. I found her to be a person who wears the role of councillor on her sleeve, it's in her blood, in her makeup and she truly is dedicated to the people within her ward and the borough. During some tremendous work, community work, she helps everyone from all ages and backgrounds, daily trying to improve their lives, making them feel appreciated as part of the community, wanted and heard as she is regularly seen in that area at all times. Community care and loving, enthusiastic, hard work and dedicated to her ward and its people, that describes Patricia, a dedicated councillor through and through. She has constantly demonstrated her qualities throughout her time in public life and has been a steadfast advocate for this town and borough to continue improving the facilities particularly available to those in Fenside. Councillor Marston is friendly, approachable, inspirational, she listens and always places the needs of her residents first and she works tirelessly to strengthen the connections between her residents, local organisations and the council. For all these reasons and more, it is with great pleasure and honour that I propose councillor Marston, the deputy mayor of Boston, who will serve this town and borough with their utmost dedication and energy to contribute to the ongoing strength and success of Boston and its people. Together we will be a force to be reckoned with, Boston will certainly gain from the strength of our team. I therefore move that councillor Marston be appointed deputy mayor to hold office until the next annual meeting of the council. May I have a second please?
Mr Mayor, it gives me great pleasure to second that proposal. I've known Patsy a short time, but I have been impressed by her selflessness, her dedication, not only to her ward members, but to the people of Boston, not to mention her wicked sense of humour and I have got the photographs to prove it. I know she will serve this role with dedication and passion and will make an excellent deputy mayor. Therefore I have pleasure in moving the proposal, thank you.
Are we all agreed for councillor Marston? Thank you. So if I can ask councillor Marston to come forward please? I'd like to thank the council for their lovely presentation of flowers as well. It's very kind of you, much appreciated, thank you. We now don't need to receive apologies for absence and I'm going to ask my chief executive.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, we have three apologies this evening from councillors Bedford, Cresswell and Drayton, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. I will now ask councillor Sarah Sharp to propose a vote of thanks to the retiring mayor councillor Helen Staples, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It is both an honour and a privilege to offer this vote of thanks to our retiring mayor councillor Helen Staples. Helen, on behalf of everyone here this evening and indeed I'm sure all those you've met throughout your mayoral year, we offer our sincerest thanks for your unwavering dedication to Boston and its people. As a lifelong and proud Bostonian, your love for our historic town shines through, not just in your admiration for its buildings and heritage, but in your deep respect and care for the people who call it home. With your wonderful Mayoress Jen by your side, you've represented Boston with warmth, commitment and heartfelt sincerity. Jen, your support throughout the year has been truly invaluable. You've given your time, energy and enthusiasm without hesitation, attending events, engaging with the community and standing proudly alongside Helen through every moment of her mayoral year. Thank you for your dedication and for being such a genuine ambassador for our borough. From countless local events to significant and moving moments such as the re-interment of Matthew Flinders made unforgettable by the stunning performance of Bring Him Home by the Coastland Biona Choirs, to your visit to RAF Coningsby and that surprise typhoon fly past, this year has been filled with meaning, memory and purpose. At the heart of everything you've done has been people. The time and attention you've given to so many community organisations, your willingness to listen, to celebrate their work and to simply be present has meant the world to them. You've opened the doors of the municipal buildings to so many schoolchildren, giving them the opportunity to learn about local democracy and the rich history behind our civic regalia, thanks in no small part to our knowledgeable officer Andy Lamming. Those visits will leave a lasting impression and help inspire future generation to feel proud of Boston. You've also recognised the dedication of council officers, community groups and volunteers, welcoming them in with tea and cake and offering them your heartfelt thanks. These meaningful gestures have lifted spirits and strengthened community bonds. Your ability to connect not just as mayor but as a friend and true community leader has had a real and lasting impact across generations, across communities and across all corners of the borough. Throughout the year you've worked tirelessly to raise funds for your chosen charities, Boston Gateway, Framework Homeless and Floating Support Team and Local Hope. From your fundraising in the evening at the rugby club, to the afternoon tea at Blenky Memorial Hall, to last satisfy's fashion show at the Guildhall, to name just a few, your calendar has been full and your efforts extraordinary. And all the while you have remained the dedicated and exceptional councillor we have always known, supporting residents, championing causes and encouraging us to all keep moving Boston forward. Helen, we're incredibly proud of you, thank you for a year of wholehearted service, for your generosity of spirit and for your unwavering pride in our town, thank you.
I can vouch for the cake. May I have a second please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I can get used to calling you Mr Mayor. Yeah, I would wholeheartedly like to say thank you to councillor Sharp. I'm delighted as well to hear of her support and vote of thanks to Helen. From her personal experience, looking back over the year, I've accompanied Helen, like many of my colleagues, to various events. She has proved that she's very versatile, she can put her chain on in the toilet. Not that I saw her, but she told me, well actually Jen told me. Yeah, I've seen her at Old Leake School Library, also seen her at the stump, where the people there absolutely adore her, I've seen her at the fair, not on the dodgems like Jen with the David though. I've also seen her at my hobby in Old Leake and at Fishtoft and also she's been to many coffee mornings. She helps the homeless and encourages the people, she's met our outreach team, her many fundraising activities as well. And also I remember her meeting various people and children in the chamber. My favourite and our most common theme has been our love of cake and chatting, hasn't it Helen? Yeah, so I look forward with the new mayor to lots of chatting and cake. So also by her side has been Jen and Suzanne and Jade. So I would like to say a big thank you and I'm sure all of you would as well as we support councillor Sharp, but also to Helen who's a wonderful friend and a marvellous councillor colleague, thank you Helen.
Thank you councillor Baxter. Right, I'm now going to do a presentation of the Mayor's badge, is that right? Oh sorry, are we all agreed of the two proposals, seconded, are you okay? Thank you, apologies, I'm jumping the gun again. Now I'm going to do a presentation to the mayor about a retiring badge and plaque. That nice badge there for the retiring mayor. Oh sorry now, now I'm going to do a presentation to the past Mayoress. This one here. Oh. Yes, you've got to do it, not me.
I think my husband might say I don't need a microphone, but anyway, here we are. Mr Mayor, honoured guest, it's my privilege to present this past Mayoress's badge and plaque to Jennifer Oglesby, or Jen, as I call her. She's been an absolute rock to me throughout my mayoral year. She's been at every function, she's smiled, she's met people with grace, she's been amazing. And I stupidly fell and fractured my shoulder, dislocated and fractured my shoulder in January. She chauffeured me around and nothing, just nothing has been too much trouble for her. Jen has a heart of gold and she's really enriched the role of Mayoress, she's worked so hard and I just want to thank her from the bottom of my heart for all she's done. So Jen, if you'd like to come forward and receive your plaque and your badge, Jen. I would like to respond to the vote of thanks given to me by councillor Sarah Sharp. What can I say, you've reduced me to tears Sarah, you really have, it's absolutely beautiful. Thank you so much for all the kind things you said. It's been an absolute joy to work alongside Sarah and David Scoot in Fishtoff Ward. Three colleagues, we get along so well together, there's never been a cross word between us, we just gel. We work for the benefit of our people in our ward. It's been a tough year for us, we've had a few hiccups this year, but we stick together and we're a team, we're team Fishtoff. And they've both been so supportive to me. I'm just so grateful to the support that I've received from everybody but Sarah and David, thank you. And thank you so much Sarah, those words were really beautiful. And thank you John, and I'm sure wherever we are John, I shall muster up some cake.
Thank you Helen, could I have a second please for the retiring deputy mayor?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would like to wholeheartedly second councillor Staples's vote of thanks to our retiring deputy mayor councillor Suzanne Welbury. Suzanne, thank you for your steadfast and dedicated support to our retiring mayor and Mayoress throughout the past year. Your commitment to your role as deputy mayor has been clear to see and I know your presence has been a reassuring and valuable support to them both. I would like to extend special thanks to your daughter Jade who served admirably as your deputy Mayoress. Together you have not only represented the borough with warmth and sincerity, but also brought enthusiasm and dedication to every event engagement you have attended. In addition to your duties as deputy mayor, you've continued to be a hardworking, committed councillor, tirelessly supporting your own community just as you've always done. It's a testament to your energy and passion for public service that you've balanced both roles with such effectiveness. Your tireless efforts in organising and supporting the Mayor's charity events have also been deeply appreciated. These occasions have not only been enjoyable and well received by the community, they've also successfully raised the profile of three very important charities. In doing so, you have made excellent use of some of our town's beautiful buildings, helping to showcase them as venues of which we can all be proud. Thank you once again for everything you've contributed over the past year, it's been truly valued.
Sorry about that folks. I'm now going to ask the retiring mayor councillor Helen Staples to move a vote of thanks to the retiring deputy mayor. And you're going to do a presentation as well, yeah?
Honoured guest, ladies and gentlemen, Mr Mayor. When choosing my deputy mayor, Suzanne was the obvious choice. When choosing my deputy mayor, Suzanne was the obvious choice. Because of her dedication and commitment to the ward she represents, Swine's Head, I had witnessed what a hardworking, community-minded person she is. So she seemed the obvious choice to me because we're both very similar in how we feel about our communities. And so she's worked so hard and tirelessly this year for me. And not only as my deputy mayor, but in her helping with the charity fundraising. It's not an easy job to raise money for charity these days when money isn't aplenty. But somehow Suzanne has the touch. And together, we've managed to raise, I think, quite a lot of money for our chosen charities. And I'm so grateful to Suzanne, as I am to Jade, her daughter, as deputy mayoress. We've been a good team. It's been an all-girls team. And I think that's been wonderful. Quite a while since the boroughs had an all-girls team. So I really would like to propose a vote of thanks to Suzanne for her time as deputy mayoress. She's been absolutely wonderful. Suzanne, thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Sorry, are we all agreed? Thank you. Apologies, I'm now going to ask the deputy mayor to respond to the vote of thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councillors. Thank you, esteemed guests. Well, wow, what a year. We've had a fantastic time. As Helen said, it's been an all-girls team and we've gone everywhere and done everything. It's been an eye-opener for me because I'm a new councillor. I've only been a councillor for two years. I did not realise what was involved with this role, nor the role of deputy mayor. But with Helen's lead, it's shown me the way. Thank you, Sarah, for those kind words. Thank you, Helen, for your kind words. Thank you, Jen, and to Jade. And we'll do it all again for Barry next year. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You won't believe I've been rehearsing this twice today, would you? I still get it wrong. Just goes to show, I'm only human. And now for the preliminary items. To receive a declaration of interest from members of the council. We're going to go on to the agenda, item A pack, declarations of interest. I'll ask the chief executive to speak.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. May I inquire whether any members wish to declare any interests in respect of tonight's agenda? Thank you. There are none, Mr Mayor.
Have I the councillor's permission to sign the minutes of the meeting of the council held on the 3rd of March 2025? Thank you. What a performance. I have to sign each corner of each bottom of the page and then sign it on the back. That's why it took so long. My golly, I never knew that. Receive any communication, if any, from the mayor and chief executive?
Yeah, there are none, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Rob. Agenda items on one, part two now, the agenda items, scrutiny arrangements. We'll now move on to the agenda items for this evening. The first being the scrutiny arrangements report, which starts on page 19 of the agenda. Can I ask councillor Gleeson to introduce the report, please?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you. I'm... When I was re-elected back onto the council, I was surprised that we still were following the same arrangements we had in 2011. I was impressed with the way that scrutiny was working in general. And the new members took on the role of scrutiny very quickly. But it became apparent to me that there were two areas we weren't pursuing as well as we should. And they were pre-scrutiny, that is, looking at policy the executive have in development. And then also enabling members to develop their own policy. One of the roles of scrutiny is to allow members to do through task and finish groups and other systems, to actually develop policy. And so I was becoming very concerned about that. And so I thought we needed really to start looking at it. Then with the change in local government that's proposed, LGR, I was really concerned that we needed to have our scrutiny committee at its very best. Because we need to ensure that the putative town council for Boston and our parishes, particularly our larger parishes, have as much power delegated down to them from the new unitary authority. Because what is being happening with the LGR is it is a power grab. We are losing local democracy in Boston. And unless we bolster our town and parish, we won't have any say in the new structures. And so I thought maybe we needed to look at how we allocate work between the committees. So in early February, I emailed the chair of EMP and suggested that we had a scrutiny, a joint scrutiny, looking into the issue of... Initially, this was to be looking at how we structured our work. The chair of EMP replied that she felt with only two years to go, she didn't see the point. So I then sent a detailed reply with my concern and said that I would pursue it with my own committee unless she wanted to join. So then I asked section 151 officer to do a report on the structure. And out of that came a lot of suggestions. Some of them a bit like I was starting with, which was the reallocation of the workload. But it really highlighted that we need a slightly different structure. A more active, meeting more regularly scrutiny committee, where we don't divide the work. Because one of the other issues is we've ended up with a lot of duplication of work between the two committees. And also the splitting of reports. And so quite often, a report that should have really been going to CNC has gone to EMP. And a report that should go to EMP has gone to CNC. In fact, if you look at the CNC agenda at the end of this month, the majority of reports on them actually are reports that were for EMP. And so reading the very detailed report done by our officers, actually, which was really good, I became convinced that we needed to have a single committee, larger and meeting more regularly. That would enable us to continue work quicker, to manage task and finish group quicker. There would be councillors who are not on scrutiny more who would be available to be on task and finish groups. So in the end, I became convinced that we needed a single committee. At CNC scrutiny of that report, members suggested that we have an increased membership. So the membership is going to 15, was proposed at 15. And we also suggested a six-month review to make sure it was meeting what was or is promised by the new structure. But really, I think we owe it to the people of Boston to ensure that we have the most robust remnants of local government in the town. Else, as we know, you're going to have six or seven councillors representing the whole of the borough. We're not going to have a say. Historically, we have been left aside by Lincolnshire time and time again. And this new structure will be no different. So I move the proposal.
You move the proposal, okay. Thank you. Is there a second or would you like to reserve your right to speak?
One second.
Yep.
Well, I'll second it, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Woodliffe.
And reserve the right to speak.
Noted. Are there any speakers on this item? That's Woodliffe.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, I'm going to pick out what it says in the report, actually. And it says that a copy of the report is attached as appendix one. Members consider the report and provide the following feedback. This is coming from members. The current arrangements were deemed outdated. There was significant duplication of evidence sending reports to both committees, which was inefficient for both officers and members. And we've got to consider the officer time involved, that you've got two committees, you're doubling up around the time the officer having to spend. And we are in a situation where we have to make the very best of our officer time. Reports have been submitted to the incorrect committee due to misalignment, meeting dates and deadlines. Task and finish groups should adopt a more proactive and progressive approach led by a strong chairman. These groups did not have to be restricted to a single committee membership. A single committee would have the capacity to scrutinise all matters comprehensively. Consolidating one committee would lead to cost savings, very important at the present time. And it was suggested there'd be a single, more robust committee with increased membership, which would meet more regularly, because the new committee would have 15 members as opposed to 11. The format and clarity of submitted reports would be improved. And the majority of members expressed a preference for a single focus committee, which will meet more regularly. I think it's generally true that the members themselves see the importance of this change and I support it. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Woodliffe. Do I have anyone's speakers? Councillor Riley?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I am disappointed with how this paper has been delivered, as are the members of this council who have contacted me personally. And I do not mean members of my group. Myself and councillor Gleeson had a conversation on February 10th. Councillor Gleeson was keen to merge the two committees. My comment at that time was, why change the format now? When, within two to three years, we will become unitary and it will all change then? As you all are aware, we have two scrutiny committees. So why weren't both committees given this paper to pass views on? Why did it only go to CNC? I have been chair of EMP for the last two years. This report talks of significant duplication of reports being sent to both committees. I have not seen this. And reports being sent to incorrect committees. I have not had any incorrect reports. It states task and finish groups should adopt a more proactive and progressive approach led by a strong chairman. Read into that what you wish, but actually, I think it is a rather harsh comment on past members' contributions. The report states that the format and clarity of submitted reports were improving. So was there an issue with the reports that were being delivered to members? We have had delays on reports being ready, so the item has had to be pushed back in our work programme. That will still happen because of officers' workloads. I take great exception to councillor Gleeson's comments on May 8th at the CNC meeting. At no point did councillor Gleeson come back to me with some of his reasons, such as the meeting convened for the 8th of May, but commented that I still had no desire to go forward on this item. I can assure you that conversation never happened. And I am appalled that I have not been seen to be interested. Might I suggest, councillor Gleeson, the next time you would like all members to attend a scrutiny meeting, why not send them a personal email setting out your proposals? You may find then more members would attend, not just six from the committee, who then robustant your proposal, four of the committee are absent. The report mentions consolidating to one committee would lead to cost savings. This is not about saving seven and a half thousand pounds. This is all political. This council back in January awarded massive allowance increases way above what the IRP had recommended. The leader had a 49% increase. And now we have an extra portfolio holder costing £10,000. Clearly, the cabinet are struggling with their workload. 2.2 of this report states the majority of members expressed a preference for a single focus committee that would meet more regularly. 10 members sit on CNC. They are the ones that have expressed their views. Are we suggesting EMP were not focused? When you continue to look at the report... When you continue to look at the report that was delivered to C and C, two point four, we had advantages and disadvantages of having two committees. It talks about potential overlap. This did not happen at EMP. We were very fortunate that we had a very experienced clerk guiding us. When members put forward a proposal for EMP work plan, our clerk would say yes or no, that needs to go to C and C. And I thank her for all her hard work. Moving to one committee will not take away any workload from officers, but you're asking members to take on a greater workload. The committee will possibly consider fifteen members and it is suggested they meet more frequently, once a month. It will also require extra task and finish groups working alongside as and when required. Why change it if it isn't broke? I recall an experienced member of this council once saying to me, scrutiny, scrutiny committees are very powerful. And as Chair, you have the ability to scrutinize whatever you wish. That is what scrutiny is set out to do, hold the council to account. As EMP Chair, that is what I have done. So well done councillor Gleeson, you throw me under the bus and your backhanded way of delivering this paper to council has worked. I suppose it's called politics. But that will be the end of scrutiny at Boston Borough Council. Chairs should be opposition that are opposition. May I take this opportunity to personally thank councillor Civician for being my advice and all my committee for all their time and efforts over the last two years. We have achieved what it says on the tin. We have been strong, robust, proactive and progressive. Thank you all. I will not be supporting this paper. I do not think having one scrutiny committee will follow the democratic process and will it actually deliver what it should deliver, and that is scrutiny. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Riley. Um, are there any more speakers on this item? Councilor Noble. Would you put your microphone on, please? Okay. Need a microphone because it's been recorded, it's also.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to call my own experience as a councillor previously of eight years. And, uh, my opinion, this proposed new committee of fifty members is too unwieldy. If members take time to read the papers, as we hope they do, there's plenty to talk about in scrutiny. So these meetings are going to go on for a very long time. Uh, I have to say that I don't think it's a very balanced paper either, because what we have here, the recommendations from the majority of members on, on C and C. But we'll have to look in the appendix, uh, one of the original C and C document to, to see the disadvantages. And they're listed here, you know, uh, for example, there's going to be less deep focus on specific issues. There's going to be less thorough scrutiny. Uh, a single committee may struggle to deal with all the issues because I can tell you, from my experience, there were plenty of issues for both committees to consider, whether it's EMP looking at things like dog fouling and littering, or it's, or it's C and C looking at financial matters. So I think that, that the, the balance has not been truly reflected in, in this paper. So I, I cannot support it as well. I think my opinion is the, the councillors need more scrutiny, not less. We need, uh, we need really thorough scrutiny policies and procedures and proposals. And that can be done best by the two committee model. So that's why I will not be supporting this particular proposal. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Noble. Anybody else want to speak on that item? Councilor Cantwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just echo the comments, um, councillor Noble and councillor Riley have made. This will result in diminished scrutiny at the council. Uh, and I think it really should be rejected tonight by all councillors across the chamber.
Thank you very much. Councilor Downing, Anton Downing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we preach for democracy and transparency, I think it will be a bad move. And I think the amount of work will be huge, not to mention and not to forget that the time and the manpower which we need for that meetings may take a longer time to scrutinize every paper and every agenda. Therefore, I will vote against this one and we have to, as I say, to be democratic and have more scrutiny in our hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any more speakers on the topic? Councilor Dorian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can we just clarify what the proposal was? Is it to accept option two on the paper or option one? Option two, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Dorian. Anybody else? Thank you. As there's nobody else, councillor Gleeson, can I ask you to sum up, please, for me?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I hear what the other Chair of EMP says. I did seek in early February to go down the path of a joint scrutiny of this matter. And it wasn't supported. Initially, I was just looking at a redistribution of our workload when I started looking at this. But I do believe that option two is the way forward. It will give us better scrutiny. We won't have issues like one thing being dealt with by EMP, say car parking, but the town centre redevelopment or improvement is C and C. We need a more holistic approach and we'll get that by a joint scrutiny. So also, just as an aside, an email was sent to every member before the eighth of May by Democratic Services inviting them to the meeting. So it wasn't a secret meeting. I assume the Conservative members of C and C had seen the papers. So this was an attempt to get as much involvement by as many people in the way we govern. But most importantly, I do think we need to focus the next two years on ensuring that Boston has real representation locally or as much as we can keep back. And I think scrutiny will help with that because there'll be a lot of work for the executive, but we need a scrutiny to be developing policy and looking at the ways forward. So I would like to support option two. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gleeson. May I remind all councillors, uh, the recommendations, you know, voting on page nineteen, one, two and three, the recommendations there. So if you're very clear in your mind what you're voting for, please. Um, thank you. Now we'll now move to the vote. So all those in favour, please raise your hands. All those against. The motion's carried. Thank you. We go into item two now, democratic arrangements for twenty twenty five, twenty six, on page thirty five to fifty two. I'll ask the monitoring officer, Mr. John Medlam, to introduce the report. Thank you. Councillors, please, Mr. Medlam is going to give his report. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the report sets out the council's democratic arrangements for the next municipal year. Uh, members are asked to note that as the recommendations of the previous report were just approved by council members, you're, this evening, you are being asked to approve appendices one A, two A and three A within your supplementary pack. I can also advise that in relation to appendix five, which is the outside body list and also, um, detailed as appendix E, um, in your report, that councillor Richard Austin has withdrawn his application for the Witherford District Internal Drainage Board. And as a result, the number of nominees for this body now matches the number of seats available. I'm going to read out, uh, Mr. Mayor, the recommendations for the report, just for clarity for, for all members. They are that the council approves the establishment of committees, subcommittees, panels and working groups for the municipal year twenty five, twenty six, including the allocation of seats to political groups and appointments, brackets and substitutes as nominated by political group leaders as set out in appendix one A to this report. Recommendation two, appoints chairman and vice chairman of committees, subcommittees and panels in accordance with nominations received at the annual meeting of the council as set out in appendix two A to this report. Recommendation three is to approve the programme of ordinary council and committee meetings for the council municipal year twenty five, twenty six, as set out in appendix three A to this report and grants delegated authority to the chief executive in consultation with the relevant chairman to amend meeting dates or council meetings as and when required. Recommendation four is to note the membership of the cabinet and portfolios for the municipal year twenty five, twenty six as set out in appendix four to the report. Recommendation five is to make appointments to the outside bodies where the council is the appointing body as set out in appendix five to this report. Such appointments to automatically terminate at the end of the appointment term or if the member ceases to be a member of the authority. And finally, um, recommendation six, uh, which is slightly amended to that in your report and read now reads as follows, appoints Amanda Boustrade and David Irvine as the council's independent persons for the municipal year twenty five, twenty six, brackets as detailed in appendix six of this report, approves the independent personal annual allowance rate as set out in section seven five, seven point five of this report and approves the establishment and appointments to the council's independent panel as set out in section seven point six of this report. So those are the report recommendations. Um, members will have noted that, um, before the council considers all of those recommendations, um, there, there have been two nominations for the position of vice chairman for the Audit and Governance Committee. That is, uh, nominations for councillor Danny and councillor Gilbert. And therefore, before we consider the six recommendations in the report, a vote is required to confirm the appointments of that position. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, John, for that, uh, report. Can I have a proposal, a second, firstly for councillor Anton Downing, please, a proposer? Uh, councillor Cantwell and a second. That's a Riley. Can, can I have a proposal, a second for councillor Gilbert? Councillor Woodliffe? And a second, please. Councillor Brack, thank you. We need to do some voting then, I think, there. All those in favour of councillor Danny being appointed as vice chairman of the Audit and Governance Committee, please indicate. All, all those in favour of councillor Gilbert being appointed to the vice chair of Audit and Governance Committee, please indicate. Uh, councillor Gilbert has been appointed as vice chairman of the Audit and Governance Committee. Motion carried. Thank you. I need a proposer, please, for this report, recommendation one to six, as advised by the monitoring officer. Can I have a, a councillor to move up, please? Councillor Dorian, and can I have a second, please? Councillor Broadton, thank you. Are there any speakers on this item? No? The councillor, do you wish to speak at all? No. So now we'll move to the vote. The recommendation of one to six, all those in favour? All those against? And any abstentions? No. Right, thank you. Oh, one abstention, who was that? Sorry. Oh, councillor Brown, thank you very much. Right, we go into item three, it's use of special urgency provisions, information report, pages fifty three to fifty eight. Oh, sorry, just to say that vote was carried for the recommendation, thank you. Ask the monitor to introduce his report. John, John Medler, thank you.
Yes, uh, the report at item three details the, uh, three executive decisions that have been made under the council's special urgency rules as contained within the council's constitution. Uh, these decisions are detailed within appendix one, attached to the report. And there's also a link provided to the published decision. The report is presented for noting, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Um, thank you, John. Um, I'll open it to the meeting for any comments and questions, please. No? Is everyone happy to take that as noted then? Agreed? Thank you. Item four, the quarter three finance update, pages fifty nine to eighty six. Um, can I ask councillor Gosch to introduce his report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The quarter three financial update report you have before you provides information on the forecast financial performances as of thirty first of December twenty four. The Q three outturn report was considered by cabinet on twenty sixth of March twenty five and updated the forecast position of the following items. Uh, general fund revenue forecast, general fund reserves position, capital programme twenty four, twenty five and treasury management performance. The key financial points in Q three, uh, of twenty four, twenty five are the twenty four, twenty five budget included an efficiency target of eight hundred and forty six thousand pounds. As of thirty first of December, six hundred and fifty six thousand, which is seventy eight percent, savings had been identified. The process of identifying the in-year efficiencies will continue throughout the year. Planning fee income is forecast to reduce compared to budget for twenty four, twenty five by ninety three thousand. The forecast for car parking income has increased by seventy six thousand pounds net. Investment income is overachieving to the thirty first of December twenty four by five hundred and three thousand pounds. And considering the full financial year, investment income is overachieving by seven hundred and three thousand pounds against the budget of one point five eight seven million pounds. The purpose of this report coming to full council is to amend the capital programme as detailed in the report. Amendments to the capital programme can arise for a number of reasons, such as reprofiling of spend, new requests in the year, finalisation of schemes and return of funds. The revised capital budget as at Q three is twenty point zero five two million pounds derived from the combination of twenty four, twenty five approved budget of fifty two point seven two four million pounds, new in-year approved spend, slippage into future years and decommitted spend. The overall expenditure as of Q three is nine point zero seven five million pounds. The town fund project represent the largest specific group at nine point nine one three million pounds, which is forty nine percent of the total revised capital budget. Mr. Mayor, the recommendation from cabinet to council are that full council amend the capital programme at appendix A, table five A, to take into account the changes set out in this report. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gosch. Is there a second or would they like to reserve the right to speak? Oh, councillor Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yes, I'd like to second that and I've been given the right to speak. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers on this item? Councillor Woodliffe.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yes, I'm fine with most of this report. The only thing I am very concerned about is that, uh, on page seventy five, when it talks about vehicle replacements and they've been slipped into future years, it says slipped into future years as per budget report approved by the council. It may have been, it may have come up before, but I am concerned about this vehicle rep- It may have been, it may have come up before, but I am concerned about these vehicle replacements and neighbourhood vehicle replacements. I think we have to be very careful to make sure that all the equipment we use and ask our officers to use is always up, is always first rate. It may have appeared somewhere else and maybe I missed it. But nevertheless, I'm raising here because I am concerned about vehicle replacements. We need to be sure that we protect our officers all the time, always using safe equipment. I'm sure they are, I expect councillor Gosh will inform accordingly. If not hearing, writing later on, I'd be fine, okay? But we do need to know about that, okay? Thank you much, Mr Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Woodliffe. Anybody else want to speak? Councillor Noble.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. First of all, before I talk about the, I just want to, this is for councillor Gosh, actually. I noticed on page seventy four to seventy five, we've got talk of a Boston partnership fund. Now, I don't recall that fund being available two years ago when I was councillor, but maybe I'm wrong. So I'd be interested if you can make a note of how much is in that pot, when it was instituted and when it was set up. Now, looking to the actual meat of the report, I think there's some very pleasing aspects. One is that the reserves seem to be still in their healthy state. On thirty first of March twenty five, they were virtually twelve point five million. I think we've also had a very pleasing return on our short-term cash investments, that's most welcome. And also, as councillor Gosh referred to, we've had net investment income of seven hundred and thirty thousand plus, that's very good. But I do notice that we're still a lot in our value of our property fund investments, which were begun in twenty sixteen to eighteen. And the property fund returns are forecast to be about hundred thirty seven thousand, less than anticipated. Now, that's not surprising, given we've got the dead hand of the state weighing down on public enterprise. And we've got a councillor, sorry, we have a chancellor who seems to want to be a stagflation supremo. And I can tell you now that although the Monetary Policy Committee might put interest rates down this year, inflation will return. So we're not in a very, nationally a very good position. But overall, I think it's quite a pleasing report and it's good to see all the details. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Noble. Anyone else wish to speak? Councillor Gosh, would you like to sum up?
Thank you, councillor Woodliffe and councillor Noble. Thanks for your appreciation. And councillor Woodliffe, I'll definitely get back to the team and check it out. Thank you. Thanks for this. Thank you.
We'll now move to the vote. So all those in favour? Those against? Any abstentions? Sorry, the motion was carried, thank you. Go into item five on page eighty seven. This is the waste delivery, waste services delivery model. Can I ask councillor Butler to introduce this report, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and good evening, everybody. The Environment Act two thousand and twenty one introduced the Waste Reform Programme for England. A central pillar of this is simpler recycling. This requires councils to collect food waste weekly from all households from April two thousand and twenty six. As part of this scheme, Boston Borough Council has looked at two ways of collecting the food waste. Option one A in the report is to purchase separate, smaller, seven and a half tonne food waste vehicles and retain our existing fleet. Option one B is to purchase fourteen pod vehicles that are capable of collecting food waste and general waste at the same time. This would result in us no longer needing our current fleet. Our preferred option is for the pod vehicles, with them being seen as the most economical, at six hundred and fifteen thousand pound per annum, less than option A. They're more viable, there is a shortage of HGV drivers nationally. Option B also, yeah, sorry, and also the most environmentally friendly. We would have one refuse truck going to each property instead of two. These vehicles need to be ordered in June, as there is a lead time of forty weeks for delivery. And we are proposing to bring forward our capital programme of fleet replacement in order to facilitate this new collection method. It is worth noting that with either option, changes to collection routes will need to be made. This will invariably mean changes in collection days for the majority of our residents. A full route review will be procured should these recommendations be approved tonight. I therefore seek approval from full council for the following. One, oh, hang on, got that bit. One, approves drawing forward two point one million from the capital programme allocation for twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty eight, twenty nine to twenty six, twenty seven, to fund the capital cost of purchasing food waste collection vehicles. Two, approves slippage of naught point eight four million in the capital programme allocation for food waste for twenty twenty five, twenty six into twenty twenty six, twenty seven, to fund the capital cost of purchasing food waste collection vehicles. And finally, three, approves an addition of naught point one three million to the capital programme in twenty six, twenty seven to fund the capital cost of purchasing food waste collection vehicles. I therefore seek approval from full council for the following. Thank you.
I'll ask the monitor officer to have a few words, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Just for clarity on the recommendation one, can I just confirm from the portfolio holder, was that approving drawing forward two point zero one million?
Yes, that is correct. Thank you very much.
Do we have a second, please? And I'd like to reserve your right to speak. Do you have a second, councillor Dorian?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll second that and reserve my right to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any speakers on this item? No? Oh, councillor Noble.
Right, thank you, Mr Mayor. There are several questions that arise here, because obviously this has come to full council very late and the order has to be placed, I think, in June because there's a forty-week process before they can be delivered. I'll take this in a particular order. Is the existing freighter fleet going to be sold off after April twenty twenty six? Because under the proposed scheme, they cannot be adapted. I know there's new burdens funding is going to be available from DEFRA, but it will not be enough, I think, to meet the total cost of of replacement. So I know the cost of the service is going to be three point three seven million in twenty twenty six, twenty seven. Now, money must be drawn from the capital programme because we know it's an absolute requirement that this service begins in April twenty six. But I have several concerns and questions, really. I don't count, so Gosh can take a note of these things. I mean, how many vehicles are going to be purchased? What's the cost of each vehicle? Because I think historically freighters used to cost between one hundred and sixty, one hundred and eighty thousand. So what's the cost of each vehicle? Are more operatives going to be needed? And what's the cost of that? Are there going to be tender sort? I know there is limited people who provide these vehicles. But are we going to put it out to tender? Are we going to use a framework agreement? I do hope not. Other points, why has these options come to full council so late? Because the order has to be made in June. So why has this not been presented earlier or sent to CNC for scrutiny? And other points, we've got no detailed financial breakdown of option one A. Why not? Why haven't we got a detailed cost benefit analysis of both options? We do not have that. So I think it's just a really bad lately presented report. But as I say, the money does have to be set aside because we have a statutory obligation to deliver these vehicles. That's all. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Noble. Are there any other speakers on the, on the matter, on the item? Right. Councillor Butler, would you like to sum up, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, councillor Noble, for your comments. I'll respond to them in due course, if that's all right with you. But basically, one of the reasons why it's been late is because we've been waiting for our final figures from central government regarding the allocation of the funding. So amongst other things, but as I say, I'll respond to you in full in writing if that's all right. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Butler. Now we'll move to the vote. All those in favour? Any against? No abstentions? One abstention? And the motion's carried. Thank you. Now go on to the next item on item six. Nearly there, folks, don't worry. Page, page ninety nine, the South East Lincolnshire, sorry, South and East Lincolnshire Partnership Performance Report. I'll ask councillor Dorian to introduce the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is the regular six-monthly update on partnership performance. The last report was in September. Section two notes progress of the alignment and delivery plan. All of the activities in the plan for twenty four, twenty five have either been completed, removed as no longer relevant, or moved to the twenty five, twenty six plan. Delivery is being managed and reported by assistant directors. Where an action is off plan, Mr Mayor, in terms of delivery, mitigations are put in place. There is an update on external funding in paragraph two point four and financial efficiencies are in paragraph two point five. Section three, updates on the performance framework for twenty five, twenty six. Section four provides updates on the priority boards for economic development, health, safer communities and environment with details of work undertaken in the last six months. Finally, section five, updates on the work of partnership scrutiny with all recommendations on track. Overall, Mr Mayor, significant progress has been made over the last six months since the last report. Thankfully, Mr Mayor, this report is just for noting, but if elected members have any questions, I will respond in writing. Thank you.
Are there any speakers on the matter? Any speakers? Any councillors want to speak? Councillor Noble.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I'm pleased that the financial savings, as indicated on page hundred and one, are on track. What I am concerned about is some aspects of the partnership's performance, particularly in relation to customer contact. Now, I'll give you an example. When I was a councillor before, the target for answering the telephone was about two to three minutes. Now, when I first was elected, I tried to ring up the council. I was told the waiting time was seven to ten minutes, and it was not until twenty minutes till someone picked up the phone. And then again, two days ago, I wanted to ring the council, I rang the number and after about three minutes, it just went dead. So I think that's an issue that the partnership does need to address, customer contact. I know it's a responsibility of P S P S, that's worrying. And the other thing I just have is a, is a question, really, it's a page hundred and thirteen, I think. I'll just check, just bear with me, please. And it was to do with the customer or response of workers, council workers, about how they felt or didn't feel valued. Yes, it's here. Percentage of partnership workforce surveyed collectively who feel informed about the partnership and what decisions is making. It's a derisory fifty six per cent for BBC, for Boston Borough Council. So I really think you need to canvass the views of members and make sure, sorry, of workers and make sure that you do get a response because that's key in understanding how well supported, how confident they are in the programme going forward. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks to councillor Noble. Any more speakers? No more speakers? So this is just for noting, so all agreed? Thank you, we'll move on. The last item. Animal welfare licensing policy, page one seven three. I'm going to ask councillor Broton to introduce the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This report considers the proposed animal licensing policy for Boston Borough Council. The purpose of the policy is to provide advice to businesses, operators and the public on the council's overall position with regards to the licensing, administration and enforcement of premises where licensable animal activities are carried on. Responsibility for administration and enforcement of a number of functions is delegated to licensing authorities. These activities are detailed in the body of the report. The council does not currently have a policy in relation to animal licensing. And while there is no legal requirement to adopt the policy, it is important that a clear narrative is in place to demonstrate how the authority will carry out its statutory responsibilities. And that creates both best practice and transparency. Whilst the policy relates to activities within the borough of Boston, the policies of other councils in the partnership have been taken into account to ensure that there is a consistency across the subregion. On the seventeenth of December two thousand and twenty four, the Regulatory and Appeals Committee considered a draft policy following which a six-week consultation was carried out with stakeholders. Feedback from this consultation was considered by the committee on the eleventh of March two thousand and twenty five, with a final proposed policy being approved for referral to council. It is requested that council note the content of the proposed policy and resolve to adopt the policy following which it will be published. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Broton. Is there a second? Would you like to reserve the right to speak? Councillor Dorian.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I second the policy and reserve my right to speak.
Are there any speakers on the matter? Councillor Noble.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I've got a question, really. I know from what the council said that stakeholders have been consulted. But why are we being asked to adopt an animal welfare licensing policy when we've not seen the written content of the policy? Why is the draft policy considered by licensing committee members not presented here in order to help members make a decision? So we're putting the cart behind the horse. I have no objection to an animal welfare licensing policy. I think it's probably a very good idea, but we were being asked to approve it before we've actually seen the content of the policy. Putting the cart behind the horse, and that's why I have to abstain on this matter. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
All right, let's have some order, please. Let's have some order. It's in the, in the papers, councillor Noble. I suggest you have a good read and then. Thank you. I thank you for your comments and kindly noted, but the report's in the pack of papers. Are there any other speakers? No. Right. Councillor Broton, would you like to sum up, please, on your proposal?
Nothing to sum up, I've already said about it, so, yeah.
Thank you very much. So everybody, all in favour? Would you like to vote on this, all in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? That's carried, that motion. All right, that concludes the formal business of this meeting. Everybody's smiling now, I can understand why. And I would ask you all to remain seated for a few minutes before coming through to the mayor's parlour. And I'm just going to just check to make sure that we're still not live on the air.